Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, school committee meeting located at the Tingsboro High School PDC room. I officially call this meeting to order. My name is Anthony Tenorella. We will start with introductions to my left.
Becky Stanton.
Michael Woodlock, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, I'm Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Danielle Athanas.
Ryan McMahon.
Dustine Puma.
Rob Mullen.
Joe Messina, School Business Administrator.
Thank you. If everyone would please rise for the national.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. At this time, I'll seek a motion to approve the March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, school committee minutes, the March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four executive session minutes, the March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four negotiation subcommittee executive session minutes, and the April third, two thousand and twenty-four negotiation subcommittee executive session minutes. None of the executive session minutes will be released at this time.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six zero zero. Citizens' time. Not that I don't see citizens, but none of them wants to speak.
All right, Mr. Chair, at this time, I would like to make a motion to take the following items in this order out of order, nine A, nine C, and then nine B.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? I carry six zero zero. And we are welcoming the Tingsboro Elementary School folks.
So, Ms. Dr. Salmon, are we going right to the students, Mrs. Kavanaugh? They're right, ready to go, right from the start. Love it. Well-oiled machine. So at this time, we'll turn it over to our elementary school.
Yes.
Thank you for having us here tonight. I'd like to start by introducing ourselves. My name is Christopher Bowe. I'm in fifth grade. My teacher is Mrs. Stanley.
My name is Ty Salmon. I'm in the fifth grade, and my teachers are Mr. Lewis and Mrs. Viero.
My name is Jack Souza, and I'm a fifth grader in Mr. Stewart's class.
Hi, my name is Evie Athanas. I'm a fourth grader in Mrs. Carney's homeroom class.
My name is Ivy Ramaska. I'm a fourth grader in Mrs. Carney's class.
My name is Carolyn Turner, and I'm a fourth grader who's also in Mrs. Carney's class.
Hi, my name is Will, and my last name is also the same as Evie's, and I'm in fifth grade, and my teacher's also Mr. Stanley.
We are nearing the end of the school year, and this is a great opportunity to tell you about some of our favorite events that are coming up. Before we get to that, I think it's important to talk about our awesome playgrounds. The weather has been great this winter, and we have spent a lot of time outside on our playgrounds. The tire swing is popular during recess. It's wide enough for two people, so you can enjoy it with a friend. The big wide side is awesome, and even better and faster when it's flat. The spider web is fun, and a lot of students like to hang upside down from it. My personal favorite is the spiral ladder that you can climb up. The squishy surface underneath it makes it easier to do gymnastics and other activities on the ground because it doesn't hurt your hands. Everyone looks forward to recess these days because of our amazing playgrounds.
On May ninth, the gym will be filled with science projects researched and presented by fourth and fifth graders. I am looking forward to this night because I'll be presenting my project on the difference between African and Asian elephants. Anyone who wanted to participate got permission from home, and with the help of Mrs. Maraca, they picked a topic to research. We will present our projects in the gym using a tri board and any materials we might have used.
Carolyn and I are also participating this year. Our project is what causes bioluminescence. The same night at the science fair is the art show. This is a presentation of the various projects we have completed in art during the school year. Miss Anderson spends a lot of time putting together displays and information about each project. Every single student at TES has a piece of artwork on display. I remember last year, there was a recreation of Monet's Pond on the floor when we walked into the school. It had painted rocks, lily pads, and koi fish. It was very artistic and realistic.
While you're admiring art and learning about scientific facts, you can enjoy a pasta dinner. Tickets will be available for that as the event gets closer. The first grade has been working hard preparing for their spring concert. That is scheduled for Thursday, May twenty-third in the afternoon. Miss Goethe told us that they would be singing about spring animals. They will be singing about birds, bunnies, and butterflies, just to name a few.
One of my memories from last year is a third-grade wax museum. This year, it'll be on Friday, May thirty-first. Third graders choose a famous person and then research their life and accomplishments. At the museum, we can dress up as a person and answer questions as if we are them. There's a pretend button on the table that families can push to turn on the character. It does get hot in the gym, so we recommend light clothing. Each student has a tri board to go along with their presentation.
June fifth is field day at TES. Most of us at this table look forward to the car wash station. It's made with PVC pipes and pool noodles, and sprays water as you ride a scooter board through it. I recommend a change of clothes because you will get wet. There are other stations like pole and ball relay races, and of course, the famous DJ dance party led by my dad and Jack's mom. Each class chooses a color to wear on that day, and families have the option to purchase TES shirts in that color if they'd like.
I'm looking forward to the end-of-year celebrations. The end-of-year family barbecue is scheduled for June tenth. It's a fun time for students to come back to TES at night and enjoy burgers and hot dogs and hang out with their friends outside of the school day. There is an ice cream truck and a DJ that will play music for the kids. Last year, we had a little bit of rain, but it didn't dampen the fun.
We are looking forward to the fun activities that have been scheduled for our very own fifth-grade fun week. Each something special is planned, like popcorn and movie Science Exploration Day and the ice cream truck. And Knuckle Bones comes and sets up games for us usually during that week. In addition to celebrating us as fifth graders, graduating seniors walk through the hallways of TES one last time in their caps and gowns. During our fifth-grade fun week, we take a bus to the middle school and get a tour of the classrooms. Looking forward to meeting the teachers and seeing the classrooms before we start school next year. I'm also looking forward to the new middle school, who will be one of the first classes to attend when the doors open.
One of the last events planned for the end of the school year is a fifth-grade moving-on ceremony. On June eleventh, weather permitting, this ceremony will take place outside on the grass. Friends and family are invited to watch us walk across the stage and celebrate our time at TES. Dressing up is optional on that day, and most fifth graders do dress up. Finally, on the last day of school, the fifth graders do one final walk through the halls of TES before we exit for summer vacation. It's going to be a busy end to the school year, but we are looking forward to it, and not just because it means summer vacation is close. We hope to see you at some of our events this spring. Thank you for having us tonight.
Awesome. Great job, guys. Mr. McMahon always has questions, so before we start, I just want to say, when you guys present, when the kids present to us, it's why we do this. It's why we volunteer to be here. So we thank you for that presentation. Thank you for being here. Thank you to the parents for coming out with the kids tonight. It makes what we do worth it, so thank you. I will open it up to the committee.
I have a question, Mr. McMahon. So I have an easy one for you. So far, what's your favorite memory of the year? We'll start with Chris and we're going down.
Um, probably field day.
My favorite is having my dad as the principal.
How's Mrs. Kavanaugh feeling?
And having Dr. Riley as our gym teacher.
Uh, mine is, um, the car wash and field day.
I think mine would be the third-grade wax museum. I'm gonna have to agree with Evie. I agree with Evie and Ivy. That was probably my favorite thing I've done so far.
Does it have to be a TES? End it.
That's awesome. He said this tonight. That's awesome.
Gonna be a school committee member.
Someday, you could be sitting where Barry's sitting, the student representative.
I have, I have to say, Ty, I am not surprised that you said that having your dad as one of the assistant principals is one of your favorite memories, because when I first started volunteering in the TES library, this small little head walked by one day and then backtracked and poked his little head over, and when you were like in kindergarten, and said, "My dad's the principal," and walked away. And I said, "Your son told me that you were the principal," and he's like, "Ugh, was it Ty?" And I said, "Yes, it was." I promised my children I would not cry tonight, but I just have to say, I have known a lot of you guys since you were very small, and I am very proud of all of you for what you just did tonight with the presentation, so thank you very much. And with that, I will ask my question. You guys are the big kids in the school. Some of you are about to leave the school and head to TMS, and some of you are about to become the big wigs as the fifth graders. What advice do you have for the pre-K and kindergarten kids that are gonna start to work their way through the halls? We'll start at Will.
Two things. One, don't ever mention that again. And two, my advice is, um... Yeah, why don't we turn it off?
I think what I have to say is... You, you, you can do anything, just listen to your teacher, because they will help you a lot.
I would have to say, it doesn't get easier from where you are.
They encouraged you that night.
I would say to probably, um... Think of something to say.
Obviously, get ready for MCAS, because it's super hard.
You might want to stay in preschool and kindergarten because MCAS is boring.
I agree with Tom Jack.
I never got to answer.
Go ahead.
Two things. One, if you do get picked to present here, think of something to say before you answer. And two... Don't get in trouble with the principals.
Excellent advice.
Anyone else? Nope. Well, guys, thank you so much for coming and doing this this evening. There's a lot of adults that couldn't do what you guys just did, so we thank you very much. Thank your teachers, because they're obviously doing a great job. We want to take a five-minute recess and get some pictures.
Yeah, and I think a lot of us need to go to the science fair, because I have no idea what the difference between African and Asian elephant is.
Do it.
At this time, if I want to take a recess?
Yeah, and I will make that motion to take a recess.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
I carry six zero zero.
Great job yesterday, right me up.
Was learning routines, how to be with a group. So last year truly was the first full year of implementation. The 2022-2023 school year, so our current first graders. And we had a lot that we did that year. We had our first EL, our new ELA curriculum that we implemented. We started working with Keys to Literacy. And when we started to measure our proposal back when we presented in January of 2019, we used data points such as students needing to be referred for reading services. And at that point between 2015 and 2019, approximately 25 to 35 students would be referred for reading services to start their first grade year. And happy to say that we only had nine referrals last school year. So using that as a data point and a measure, a pretty effective of them being here all day, so.
So I have the change that we're making to our K to four science model. Fifth grade is going to stay essentially what it is currently with teacher teaching math and science together. But what we're going to try to implement next year is we're going to have our science and technology, which was special, which is going to stay in the specialist rotation. And our library are going to split the science studies over the course of the year. So students will get two hours of science or two 50-minute blocks of science a week. Kind of the background to that is one of the things that we've seen is that we really need to build a strong ELA and math background. It's critical for these students, especially coming out of COVID. We've really seen a need for more tier two and tier three interventions. So we're trying to really allocate our time effectively in that sense. So ELA, to give you a little background, really encompasses reading, writing, and phonics instruction. That requires 90 minutes a day for students. So it takes up a big block of time within the school day. And 30 minutes of that instruction at the K to three, we need a phonics minimal to get our foundations program done. Math requires about 60 minutes plus a day. And social studies, we're able to with our new HMH curriculum that we've talked about, is really embedded into that curriculum. There's a lot of reading and through the magazines and different things throughout the HMH curriculum. We're really able to incorporate social studies more into that. So we think with this new schedule, by having two 50-minute blocks a week throughout science and library, science and tech and library incorporating science into that, we'll really be able to target that tier two and tier three support that we need. It'll give us, it'll free us up time to have an additional wind block every day for students. So students will have a wind block that's dedicated, that doesn't overlap throughout the schedule, K to four, and then they'll have an additional wind block as well. So those two things, it really will emphasis on the science standards. We're looking to enhance our instructional practices through that with Ms. Larschel and Ms. Maraka. Both have been classroom teachers before, so they're going to have a background in science instruction. Students are going to have an opportunity to, you know, still work with what they've been doing in science and technology presently. So they've worked on coding, typing. There's going to be time allocated through science and technology to really work on those skills. And then on the library side, they're still going to have time to take out books and really do some of the stuff that the library curriculum has provided over the years. We're also looking at options to really enhance or embed our ELL services within the science classroom and throughout that curriculum, hoping for an increase in the use of the vocabulary and really have that program enhanced a little through the use of having them push into science in those classes.
And so the final piece that we wanted to share tonight is the transition to TMS. So I have a picture there of the bridge. I feel like this is going to be a little corny to say, but we can look at that bridge as an opportunity to divide us as a community or to bring us together. And I feel like Tingsboro is so unique in what we provide for educational opportunities for students. We have students from preschool through grade five. So in a lot of cases, our students are with us for at least six years and in some cases, eight years. And many of the students you just heard from were in our daycare program, which we used to have. So our students are with us for an extended period of time. And in Tingsboro, we only have two transition years, the five-six and the eight-nine. And I feel like, I've said this to Dr. Flanagan, we have one chance to get it right. And I don't think that we've neglected on that. I feel like our kids are successfully transitioning to the middle school, but I think we can do a better job. And I've sort of tasked myself with how can we make this transition more seamless for our students and our families? So a few of the things that, you know, research tells us about transitions, and again, Tingsboro kids only have those two opportunities to do this transition. Things that middle schoolers worry about are things like logistics, right? Where is my classroom going to be? Where is the cafeteria? Who are my teachers? Who am I going to be in class with? They worry about all of the details. And I feel like it's incumbent upon us as educators to make sure they have all of those facts before they walk in on day one. Another aspect to middle school, as we all know, is the social piece. It's such a pivotal time for them to navigate the social connections with their peers and make sure that they're growing as learners, but also within their community. So making sure that we really ensure that there's a thoughtful plan for how our students are transitioning from TES to TMS and making sure we grow them as independent learners and giving them more of a voice, right? More of a voice and choice in what's happening within their education. And finally is the academics, right? You know, I think one of the things, all three of us now have had the opportunity to have children transition from TES to TMS. And, you know, I know that we build that solid foundation at TES, but it's, I feel like it's really important for us to make sure that vertical alignment is solid and we have a good understanding. Our fifth grade teachers know what's happening in sixth grade and vice versa. Our sixth grade teachers really should know what's happening at the elementary school. I want to be able to respond to questions thoughtfully when they come up. So when kids are asking us about what's happening or what to expect at TMS, I want to be able to confidently respond to those questions, same as if parents ask us. And right now, I don't feel like I have enough knowledge base to do that. And so how do we do that? It's getting into the classrooms at the middle school. It's inviting the middle school to TES to get into our classrooms and meet our kids. You know, that's very hard to do in a large school district. We have the opportunity to do it and we have the opportunity to do it more frequently so that our kids will know exactly what's going to happen when they cross that bridge and come over to school at TMS. So a couple of things that we've talked about in terms of increasing opportunities for students to step foot in TMS, it shouldn't just be the first day that they go on move-up day. So one of the things that recently happened was the Celebration of Us. I saw many of you there that night. So many students from TES visited the Celebration of Us, which was hosted at the middle school. In early May, our fifth grade will come over for a theater performance at the middle school. Our move-up day is scheduled for June 4th. But before they do that, we felt like it was important for TMS to come to our house. So Mr. Polit will be coming over with staff from the middle school, but students. We want students to come and speak about their experience at TMS. We want kids to be excited about this transition. And yes, they're going to be anxious and they have a lot of questions, but we want to be able to answer those questions and give them as many opportunities to get to know what the middle school is all about. And again, as I mentioned earlier, the move-up day is on June 5th. I had met with Principal Polit not too long ago and I said, we usually wait until a little later in June. I think it's important that we do it beforehand, as early in June as we can so that we can make sure that we've answered all of the questions that the kids have, that schedules are set and they can meet their teachers and know who's going to be in their classrooms and, you know, answer all of those logistic questions that I know are weighing on their minds right now. Earlier, I mentioned just providing opportunities for staff to visit both TES, but also for us to get into the classrooms of the middle school. And I think that's an important piece so that students know that the educators that have been supporting them for all of these years are knowledgeable about what their experience is going to be during this transition. I know in several committee meetings, there's been conversation about our coaching model. We are looking to expand our coaching model, as you know. So Mrs. Cooper, our math coach, has been working at TES. She's in her third year. And so her role will expand to the middle school, which will help with that vertical alignment that I talked about earlier for, from a curriculum standpoint. And we'll be adding a literacy coach who will be working in kindergarten through grade eight. Again, just another piece, another staff member that helped tie those pieces together from a curriculum standpoint. Next year, our fifth grade model will shift a little bit. So we've been in a departmentalized model at TES for a number of years. We're going to continue in that model. We will not have a self-contained classroom, meaning one teacher teaching all of the content areas. We will have two three-person teams. So still an ELA social studies teacher and a math-science teacher and one special ed teacher per team. And we've also been able to schedule a 50-minute block at the end of the day, which will allow us to have the opportunity for flexible grouping. So what does that mean? As you know, many of you have had children who have transitioned to the middle school. They don't stay with the same cohort of students. They will have different classes with different kids. And that's an important thing that we feel like we need to be able to offer our students in fifth grade to prepare for the transition to middle school. So basically, we'll have a 50-minute end-of-the-day block where there'll be opportunities for them to be engaged in academics, wind block, social studies with peers from other classrooms, which we feel is really important to help with that transition. So I say all of this and I say that, you know, I'm confident in what we've done, but I know we can do better. And how do we do better? We need to get more information. So we need to talk to our current fifth graders. What questions do you have? What worries do you have? What answers can we provide for you? And we want to start to have those conversations with them now. And then our hope is actually to interview those same students in the fall of next year, when they've settled in at TMS. How's it going? What's worked? What hasn't worked? What were you prepared for? What weren't you prepared for? And how can we help future students with this transition going forward? I think another important piece obviously is family feedback. Mr. Woodlock is working on a district-wide survey for families and there are questions embedded in there about this particular transition. And, you know, I think it'll be important to continue to have those site visits and observations and really hear from everyone about how it's going so that we can make informed decisions about how best to make this transition as seamless as possible for students, knowing that we've got one shot to get it right. And it's a really important transition for our students. One other piece that I forgot to mention, and I do apologize. In trimester three next year, what we will look to do is shift some of our philosophies, so to speak, to align better with the middle school. So we know that grading changes dramatically from fifth to sixth. Homework changes. We don't really have homework at TES. I know TMS has scaled back a little bit, but we want to make sure that we're giving opportunities for kids in the third trimester at the elementary school to mirror what's happening at the middle school for that transition. Communication is a big piece. I know that when my own children transitioned from elementary to middle school, there was a big emphasis on my kids to communicate things to me and I didn't always get that information. So making sure that we encourage kids to be vocal in their education and share those experiences and due dates and things that are coming up and events and activities, that they're going to be the ones that are sharing that information with families. And then finally, I think just the executive functioning piece of middle school in general, shifting to five different classrooms and making sure we prepare kids for that. So we're going to kind of up the ante, so to speak, in trimester three to allow for more opportunity for it to mirror something, some of the things that are happening at TMS. So that was a lot. I feel like I was.
A ton of information right there.
A lot. It's been on my mind a lot lately. I had just said to Mr. Woodlock before we walked in, I went to the Celebration of Us. It was a great event, but I also was sad because I'm like, I haven't been in the middle school in way too long. So we often have our leadership meetings here. And so I don't get the, I get the opportunity to walk the halls of the high school, but I don't get the opportunity to be in the middle school as often as I should. And so that's something that I need to own and say, I need to make dedicated time. There is plenty of time in the morning where I can get there before I, you know, our day starts at the elementary school. I can spend a good solid hour before school starts at TMS so that I can check in with our former students to see how things are going and get into the classrooms. And, you know, I think it's just a matter of really trying to work together collaboratively. And, you know, I think the best way for us to solidify these transitions is kind of a team effort. So I look forward to working with administration at the middle school and the teachers there. So that's it.
And we're building a premium middle school to walk through.
I know, I know. And very cool furniture.
Yes, very cool.
Very cool furniture. We do love the furniture. We're a little jealous.
Cubby thing, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Absolutely. Just open it up, yes.
Mrs. Souza, I was happy to hear about the full-day kindergarten. My own personal experience, I had seven years between one of my children going to kindergarten and another going to kindergarten. Both went to full day, but it was a huge difference. And I really liked what I was seeing where they were accessing the curriculum all day long instead of the afternoon doing specialists. And I feel that the way that personal experience, that it's set up now is setting them up for better success in first grade. So just from a personal experience comparing the old model to the newer model, I really like what I'm seeing there. So thank you so much for that. I know that was a lot of work for it to get in place and get up and running, but I'm seeing a big difference. And it's not to say anything bad about the old model. The old model worked at the time, but this is a huge improvement.
And I think a lot of things have changed because even looking back, just, I'm like a stats person. So like even looking back at the year 2000, right? There were 26% of kids that accessed full day. We're at 99.6%. So, I mean, a huge difference that we've come a long way and I think it's needed, so.
Yeah. And then just to talk about the transition from elementary to middle school, I'm really glad to see that we're focusing so much on this. This is a hard transition. As a parent, it's a hard transition. And, you know, I, between community members that I'm close to, nieces, nephews, children, I've seen a lot of these transitions and every one of them's been hard. So I'm really glad to see that we're focusing on this. Thank you.
My kids couldn't have been happier they didn't have to ride 40 minutes on the bus. It was the first ones picked up and the last ones dropped off. But yes, please.
Let's go down. Mr. Salmon, how much time are we spending on science now? You may have said I've, you did, I'm sorry if I missed it.
It's going to vary by grade. So, excuse me. So every grade, based on what their grade level schedule is, it could be, you know, 30 minutes every day. It could be, some grades will do two weeks on science, then two weeks on social studies, especially in our departmentalized upstairs in fifth grade. So it'll vary by each grade level, but it's approximately 34, 40 minutes in the upper levels. Lower levels, it's a little different because we have that phonics instruction that has to be added. So that could be adjusted every day.
So that will decrease with the new model?
No, we think it'll increase with the new model. Being able to have a sustained 50 minutes twice a week for them so they get in that time and it's going to be geared right towards science both of those days for every kid.
Okay, cool. Excellent. Mrs. Gavin, you know, echo Becky's thoughts. I think it's a very tough transition from fifth to sixth. I know we've talked about it a lot over the last few years, mostly focused on the curriculum. I think the logistics part is crucial. I think it's, you know, time well spent trying to improve that. And Mrs. Souza, it's, you know, I asked about the kindergarten decision, right? So we make decisions here and then they just kind of go off. And we may think to ask about it, we may not. I think it's good to have that feedback, you know, to us and to the community, you know. And I think we should hear it too if something goes wrong, right? Like if we make a decision, it's not working, let's get back together and talk about it. But I think all three topics are an example of how we're striving towards continuous improvement. We recognize we can always be better. I think that's the right mindset to have, so thank you all.
What exactly happens in a wind block in an elementary school class?
So all of our classrooms, kindergarten through grade five, have an embedded wind block. It's approximately, depending on the grade level, 20 to 30 minutes each day. So right now, our focus is either intervention or enrichment, or some students are receiving their special education services during that time period. Some grade levels do have the autonomy to be able to do some flexible grouping, which is nice. So they might meet with other teachers at, so just an example, first grade is really embedding a lot of flexible grouping. And so students are getting educational opportunities from other teachers in the building and working with other kids, which is a nice way to be able to support their learning style and their learning needs. So I would say the vast majority of students are receiving some level of intervention, but there are students who are having expanded enrichment opportunities as well.
And is it the classroom teacher who's doing those interventions? Or is it the sped teacher? Is it dependent upon the student?
Combination, yeah, no. So it's a team effort. We've been implementing our wind block now. This is our seventh year. And so it's, everyone is involved in wind. So it's classroom teachers, special education teachers, service providers, meaning speech and language, our OTs, our physical therapists, special education teachers are involved and paraprofessionals. School counselors are embedding in those, finding time to see students in, for social groups during those times too. So everyone's involved.
Okay, and we added another one of those?
We will be able to add an additional wind block. So right now, teachers are finding difficulty with only the 20 to 30 minutes once a day to be able to provide support and services for ELA and math. And so by adding that second wind block, we can dedicate time to ELA for 30 minutes and math for those students who require some level of intervention or enrichment in those areas.
Okay. Because my concern was about the ELA, where you have 90 minutes for ELA, which is in effect half an hour for the phonics. And then the rest of the hour would be 20 minutes writing, 20 minutes social studies, and 20 minutes reading. And I just.
No, so social.
So it's, and that just seems like a lot of transitions for the students when math is an hour and that's no transitions.
So there's no transitions? They're in the same class?
Correct. But you still have to make the transition from teaching writing and then transitioning to teaching reading. And writing is a very different skill than teaching writing.
Of course, yeah. No, absolutely.
Reading are two totally different skills to teach.
So I think it's important to note, because we're self-contained, the classroom teacher has those students all day long, right? So I have 90 minutes to cover all of these particular topics. I might do my phonics lesson first thing in the morning. I might do my writing lesson before recess. I might do my reading lesson later in the day. So there's autonomy to be able to really select the times of day in which those things are happening.
But still, reading, which is, in my opinion, probably as important as math and writing, which is as important as math. But they're two totally different subjects when you're teaching a student. And yet they only get a half an hour roughly for each of those, but they get an hour for math. So I guess my concern would be just, it makes me feel better that you're going to have that extra half an hour to work on those extra skills. But it just seems a little unequal for the hour of math, of just math, and then feels like a half an hour of reading and a half an hour of writing. And then throwing in social studies somewhere in there. It just seems like a very big bite of the apple for that ELA teacher to have to teach in an hour.
Yeah, so I just want to, I want to be clear too. It's a minimum of 90 minutes. I think what has happened over the years, especially since COVID, is I think we can all agree the most important sort of takeaway for our students at the elementary level is to build solid readers, writers, and mathematicians, right? That has to be our focus. Unfortunately, what has happened is we've had to kind of chip away at our science block. We've had to chip away at our social studies block to make sure that kids are successful in reading, writing, and math. So our core instruction, the majority of what our teachers are providing every single day, is centered around those math and reading standards. Now, that's not to say that they're not hitting the social studies and science standards, but we are feeling like right now, there's that crunch for teachers, like to fit it all in. And now we need to provide intervention. We need to provide enrichment. We need to build upon the skills that the kids have. And so that's why we looked at shifting our science instruction to special subjects. We're not required to provide library, so to speak. We don't have to provide a STEM-type special subject. It's nice to have. We're going to continue to embed those opportunities for kids. But we had to sort of take something off the plate because it was feeling unbalanced the way it was. So I certainly hear what you're saying. I just want to make sure it's clear. When we say 90 minutes, that's the recommendation, is at least 90 minutes of ELA instruction daily for elementary school aged children, and same with math, at least 60. If you were to ask any teacher at TES, how many minutes are they spending on ELA and math? It definitely exceeds that timeframe.
And then I guess my next question is, how would the literacy coaches be utilized to be used? Because like, what are their concrete purposes in helping the teachers?
Yeah, so a coaching role, the primary responsibility is really job-embedded PD. There's no better professional development than learning from your colleagues. And so we've been, you know, I think just in such a great place to be able to have a coach that has a lean and expertise in math. And she works with her colleagues and does six-to-eight-week rotations. And she's able to meet with every single math teacher in the building at TES. And she's been able to carry over all of the training that we received from Leslie University. And the hope would be, as we transition into the literacy coach, that same model would happen so that the coach would work to support our Keys to Literacy training that's happened and all of the research behind the science of reading. So it's in the moment, coaching, support, and.
So they're in the classroom with the teachers?
Yeah.
So they're seeing it enacted and then they assist as an extra hands-on deck?
Not necessarily an extra hands-on deck. They might be co-planning with, so Erica does a lot of co-planning with the teachers and they'll look at the scope and sequence and they'll look at the objectives for the lesson. They'll co-plan. Erica will go in during the lesson. She doesn't teach the lesson. She might model some of the strategies or particular topics they're looking to cover. But then they leave that lesson and they debrief and talk about what worked, what didn't work, what could we do differently? How can we grow from here professionally?
And I'm sure this provides more autonomy, like continuity between classrooms? Because if she's in different classrooms, then she can come and say, this is what they're doing there. This worked for them.
Yes. And what's nice too with her coaching cycle is she doesn't do a particular grade level all at once. She does it vertically. So she's meeting with all teachers at various course and portions of the times of the year, rather.
And actually, that's probably really good, especially for ELA, where you're not duplicating subjects or books or sources. So you're getting fresh, different sources with each of the grades. Thank you.
Yeah.
Not a question, but I greatly appreciate the fact that you want to continue to improve to help students to be able to transition into the upper grades. But it almost came across as if you were lamenting the fact that you didn't do as good enough a job in the past and you want to keep doing a better job. You know, as a father of one of those kids that you guys had for eight years, I directly correlate his success that he's having right now with all the work and the care and the support that the three of you and everyone in that building gave to him. So I just want to make sure that, you know, nobody's coming, nobody's getting the idea that it wasn't being done well in the past. It was done extremely well in the past. And I just want to wish you the best of luck in making sure that it keeps continuing to get better.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Always room for growth, right? I feel like there's always room for growth.
All right. I just want to echo what everybody else has said about the transition to TMS piece because I have been very nervous for that coming up. And so I am excited to see like the feedback from the incoming sixth graders and how that affects the upcoming fifth graders. Because I'll get to see that in real time with one of each. So that's, I'm actually really excited about that. My first question might actually be for Dr. Flanagan and Mr. Woodlock. What is the current length of time for the wind block at TMS and THS?
At THS, it's approximately 40 minutes per day. And TMS has a different mode based on what grade they're in because there's, the structure of the grade levels is different. So in sixth grade, they get about, every other day, they have about a 50-minute wind block. But it's different in seventh and eighth grade. So they have it daily in seventh and eighth grade, I believe, so.
Okay.
And again, we're looking at changing models due to our student populations. So that could change moving forward as well.
Okay. That's awesome. So that actually makes me very excited for the wind block switch because I have a kid that benefits very directly from the wind block at the elementary school and he has said that he doesn't feel like it's enough time in the wind block. So that's awesome. That's great. I just have a couple of questions about the science and tech and library switching, just to kind of clarify some things. What will that look like? So if tech and library are going to be embedded, so to speak, like how would that split out? Because those feel like three very distinct classes to me. And so I'm curious what that would even look like.
Yeah, no, great question. We actually are starting to brainstorm around some possible scenarios. So for example, one of the things we talked about was doing a three-week rotation of science instruction in both of those special subjects and then one week dedicated to more tech with Mrs. Maraca, more library with Mrs. Larschel. I think we're going to, we haven't done this before, right? So I.
Right.
So I think there's gonna be some growing pains. The primary focus of their instruction has to be science, but we don't want to take away the value, added value that we've had with the library. It's, you know, she, she's grown such a robust, you know, selection of books for the students, we want our kids to be able to take out books, it's a highlight of their experience in specials. So we don't want to take that away, we're just gonna have to scale it back a little bit, at least in the first trimester. Same with coding and the Maker Space, those are highlights, kids enjoy those, we don't want to take that away, but we're just gonna have to look to balance it a little bit better. So like I said, one of the scenarios we're looking at for trimester one is three weeks of science, one week more of that library tech piece.
Okay. How, how would we see typing continue to be incorporated in some of the, I don't want to use the word fluffier, but I guess fluffier subjects, like the digital citizenship that I know both classes touch upon, that have sparked some great conversation at home. Those kids are getting exposure to like, personal cybersecurity at a pretty young age in those classes. Would topics like that be still exposed on a regular basis, and how would they see, or annually, not regularly, but like, typing, how would they still get access to the typing classes?
Yeah.
That they are getting exposure to regularly now?
Yeah, so I mean, our children are so tech-savvy, as you know now, and so much of what we do from an academic standpoint, they have opportunity to do on their Chromebooks. And so whether it's assessments or writing activities, those are things that they're doing on a daily basis in the classroom. So I feel like that, that the tech piece is already embedded so much in, within their classroom. I don't know that we need a necessarily standalone unit on, on typing. Now, there might be some kids who need that additional support, WIN is a perfect opportunity to do that. You know, Mrs. Maraca has various typing apps and things that the kids have been working on, those are things that could happen during win block. In terms of the digital citizenship, actually, our school counselors used to provide those lessons, and they eventually kind of shifted over to Mrs. Larashell and Mrs. Maraca. Our school counselors will get back to their weekly lessons in the classrooms, and that will be embedded in that time. We've also talked about Officer Gustafson doing some of that with our upper elementary kids, too.
Why isn't the fifth grade getting lumped into this? I guess that, that, that is, that is a big question I have, like, cause fifth grade needs science too, so why are they separate?
Cause they're departmentalized.
Okay.
Right? So our K to four teachers are teaching everything.
Right.
Our fifth grade teachers are departmentalized, we have an ELA social studies teacher, and we have a math-science teacher. So we're able to, with the time and the, and the schedule, they're able to allocate as much time as they need for math and science.
Okay. And then my last question has to do, so, we all know, we all see the statistics, more and more kids are getting identified with things that have probably been there all along, but either with the advent of COVID or whatever, we're seeing more and more kids diagnosed with ADHD, autism, learning disabilities, all of the sensory processing disorder, you name it, it's starting to bubble up to the surface a little more. I know that losing specialist class for more academic time is a little bit more sitting, learning, a little bit, I know that both of those teachers have a lot of movements embedded in their class. Will there be, science is a pretty easy one, so I'm assuming yes, but will there be hands-on components and opportunity for these kids in those science blocks to not just be sitting and absorbing? Will they be able to get involved?
Yeah, I think that's what we're most excited about. Currently, there is no opportunity for a 50-minute block, except in fifth grade. So K to four, there is no time to fit in ELA and math, and a 50-minute or 60-minute ma, you know, science activity. So they're, they're cutting some of those hands-on activities shorter because of that. So I feel like this is gonna give our students more opportunity for hands-on learning.
Okay. That's great, answers everything I have.
I'm saving all my questions for Mr. Eaton.
He's ready.
Is there anything else?
Thank you. We peppered you with a lot.
Thank you guys very much for coming in.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the people who presented before you guys...
Did much better than us.
Says everything about what you guys are doing. So thank you very much for everything you do for Tinsborough Public Schools, our kids. My son is now having children, which is awesome, so, he's not going to Tinsborough Public Schools though. But thank you guys very much for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Hi, Principal Santa.
I was the principal's helper for a long time.
Well, we're jam-packed with presentations tonight, Mr. Eaton.
Yes, we are.
Mr. Eaton, come on up.
I was gonna take this vest off, Dr. Flanagan, then I saw you had one on, so I decided to keep it on.
I don't even know how to respond to that.
He wants to look cool.
We're twinning for the night.
Yeah. Thank you for the invite. Another tough act to follow, great admin team, love working with, with that crew. And here we are, and hopefully folks can see this at home, at the Magic Kingdom. So this was, I'm here to talk about primarily the grade seven to 12 band trip that you folks approved for us about a year ago, almost a year ago now. Trip took place March 13th to March 17th. Oh, nope, go back.
Sorry.
I'll, I'll give you some cues. Thank you. So the trip was open to all students participating this school year in the grade seven to 12 band. So out of 55 students, we have participating seven through 12 in the band program, 32 students traveled as part of what we call the Disney Band to Orlando. That Wednesday was our travel day, and on that Wednesday, we arrived at Disney's All-Star Music Resort in the evening, where we enjoyed dinner in the food court. And now, Mr. Woodlock, if we could move to slide two for some of the educational highlights. This was awesome, and this was kind of the, I think, the crown jewel of, of going as far as a musical experience for the, the kids, and a musical, educational experience for the kids. Thursday morning started with a trip behind Epcot, so the park that, that you normally don't see on a normal trip, it's where they keep all their recording studios, and we knew it was intense when we got off the bus, and they have you all stand aside, and they have a dog search the bus. So Disney has everything, very, very intense and tight. So they went to Epcot Studio B to participate in soundtrack sessions, instrumental workshop. The chaperones went to Epcot, the park, early. The Disney policy, they're not allowed to attend this session, for whatever reason. But I made Josh Evans an honorary band director for the, for the day, cause he came as a chaperone, was a great help on the trip. So he became an honorary band director, so he could attend. A lot of you might know Josh is a fantastic musician, piano player, so that, that was definitely a good time. Some of the key learning objectives for this workshop, after completing the workshop, students will be able to sight-read and record a varied repertoire of Disney music, sight-read, listen to, analyze, and describe musical pieces, develop and reinforce the fundamentals of musical performance, and understand what it's like to work in the music industry as a professional. Now for sight-reading, sight-reading in music, just for, for folks that might not be aware at home, is basically you're seeing it for the first time, and then you're playing it right away using the, the skills that the students have learned here in class and in their private lessons. What the students got to do here was great, was they got to record a take, they had a recording engineer there, and they could listen to the playback, and then discuss aspects of their performance with the, the Disney conductor they were working with. Then after reviewing the first take, they would describe what fundamentals they could, could be strengthened as they did a second recorded take, and they could listen to playback again. So that was, that was excellent. Mr. Woodlock? Thank you. Slide three, here we go. If you look at those top pictures, one of those kiddos has great, great concentration there, they have the headsets on. So the second part of that workshop was, as they played, they could play along with Disney musicians, a pre-recorded track of Disney musicians while they were playing, and then the different levels could be adjusted by the recording engineer that was there. So key learn, learning objectives that continued throughout this workshop, participants, participants will be able to express intonation, balance, and tone quality while following a conductor's interpretation, understand the requirements of a studio recording environment and what is expected of performers, and evaluate music and musical performances. One of the really cool things is we have a senior going on to major in sound recording technology at UMass Lowell, so this was a, a kind of great opportunity for him to, to get a taste of his future. And he was able to talk with the sound engineer there about the recording process in the, the Disney studios. At the end of the workshop, I have three, kinda, I took three snapshots there, they, we got to hear their recording mixed with the Disney musicians in set tangled, so set to Disney animation, and it was awesome. It was awesome. Now, I do have a recording of that, I don't have it to play for you tonight, because Disney made me sign some lengthy document, because of all these copyright laws, that, due to copyrights, I cannot distribute it or share it in a public setting where it might be recorded, but I do have it for the kids to enjoy in class over and over again, it was just such a, such a cool experience. So that is how we did Thursday, and then we spent the remainder of Thursday at, at Epcot. Next slide, Mr. Woodlock, please, thank you. So for that Friday, Friday, March 15th, that was the Festival of Disney Performance in Adjudication, so this was kind of the second part of the trip's educational component. Students prepared for this trip, they worked on three pieces, and then they played them for judges in a ballroom at Disney's Contemporary Resort. Now, this was intense, because they had the three judges in the back, and when they were introduced to the kids, they shined a spotlight on each of the judges. And they also had on the stage, you talk about the focus from the kids, you have 20 minutes, and you have a big clock counting down from the moment you set on that stage for warm-up, setup, and then when it's over, it's over and you go, and you're, you're on. So it was definitely a, a different situation for the kiddos, and they were quiet, they were focused, it was, it was awesome. So for this, this part of the, the trip, the festival experience fulfills many of the National Core Arts Standards in which students create, perform, respond, and connect. And one example is Anchor Standard Number Five under Performing, which is to develop and refine artistic techniques in work for presentation. So as school committee members, you might be thinking, well, how does this link to the Massachusetts frameworks that were revised in 2019? I have the answer for you. In 2019, the Massachusetts Arts Frameworks used these Anchor Standards of the National Core Arts Standards as our own Massachusetts standards for artistic practice. Okay, so they're all linked, and I remember when Dr. Branko, our previous, as you all know, Assistant Superintendent, came back from a workshop with this big document for me, he was so excited because they had a crosswalk document, they called it, that showed exactly how they were linking the Massachusetts frameworks that were done over in 2019 to the National Core Arts Standards. So it's all, all linked together, which is beautiful. Just as an example of an additional Anchor Standard artistic practice, number three under creating is to refine and complete artistic work. So that would be an example of what kids were doing as they worked on the pieces in preparation for the performances for the judges. After their performance, students received a clinic with one of the judges, and I received a flash drive with judges' comments that I'm able to share with the students. We didn't do it, this asked, this part of it as a competitive type situation, one, because we weren't traveling with the full ensemble, two, because Disney doesn't have a, a competitive slot for a seven through 12 group. They can do a middle school, they can do a high school. So based on that, I felt that the, the components that we had with the workshop the previous day, and being able to hear work with the clinician, have the comments to review after, would be more than beneficial for the students. So if we could go to the final slide, Mr. Woodlock? Thank you. Here are some pictures, some of the fun. And Saturday, so we got to go to all four of the Disney parks, Saturday was a full day at Hollywood Studios, it ended with an 8:30 performance of Fantasmic, anyone that's, it's awesome, right? Last time I was at Disney was actually with the theater program in 2010. So they've updated it since then, and it is awesome. So those of you that might not know, it's an open-air nighttime musical where the forces of good and evil battle it out in Mickey Mouse's dream. It was excellent. And then Sunday, we spent the day at Animal Kingdom before heading to the airport. So just a couple final thoughts for you on the trip, and then I'll open it up for all of Mr. Tinnarelle's questions that I know he has for me. We had an excellent experience with the travel company we used, Bob Rogers Travel, that company I had cho, chosen because they had been in business since, I believe, 81, and they had specialized in doing trips with, you know, band programs, choir programs, with the arts, that they would know how to navigate transporting instruments through the airport, oversized equipment, different things like that. One of the things that we, all the kids will get from this is, the Bob Rogers Travel Company had an app where not only I could communicate and post things with the chaperones and with the kids throughout the trip, but the kids could post pictures. So I, I went through all the pictures after, and we have about over 500 pictures uploaded, and then the company puts them into a nice kind of keepsake video for the kids of the trip, so looking forward to getting that. And I just want to share that the entire time, we had a lot of, lot of younger students going, so 20 of the 32, or 21 of the 32 travelers were seventh graders, okay? A lot of them their first time traveling, okay? And I, and I will say, they were well-behaved, they represented the community of Tinsborough, they represented our schools very well the entire trip, so I was thrilled, thrilled with that. I'm happy this year, just kind of a preview of, of where we are now, coming attractions. The Tinsborough Music Parents Association is up and running again, we have a, a great parent board that has stepped up. In the absence of, kind of after COVID, we kept it running, Mr. Messina kept the checkbook running for us, and I kind of handled the fundraising aspect of it for a couple years just myself. And through those, our annual calendar fundraisers for the raffles, and it's going on now, so please, everyone out there in TV land, get your tickets, I know you've got some more, thank you. The, the two years leading up to the trip, with those calendar raffle fundraisers, nearly $14,000 was raised for the program. What that allowed us to do was kind of offset the cost of the trip for the families participating. It allowed us to, to approve additional $150 gift cards for each traveler to offset the cost of mail purchases, cause that wasn't all included in the trip. And that money will also continue to go towards student scholarships for our lesson program that we offer here on the Norrist Road campus for kids in grade six through 12, where they get individual instrument lessons. So that will go towards scholarships for that, as well as school-owned instrument maintenance and repair and replacement. A few closing thoughts for you, since I'm not here often, but feel free to invite me back anytime. Band program currently has strong numbers at TMS. Right now, there are 77 students participating in the middle school band program. I happened to just be going through old concert programs the other day, and my first year in the district was 2008 to 2009. And at that time, there were 27 kiddos participating at the middle school level in the band program. So as of right now, our, our participation numbers on the middle school level have nearly tripled, which is excellent. And numbers fluctuate each year for variety of reasons, but as of this moment in time, as I said before, you were in a, a very good place. As you know, we hired last year a chorus teacher for the very first time, excited to have a choral program that's gonna get kicked up here in the district, and Laura Francis and I are currently working with middle school admin to get choral participation numbers up and, and get a strong choral program going too, so kids will have a well-rounded musical experience, K through 12. Previously, it was for a very long time in middle school, was just, if you did band, you got music, and if you didn't, no music. Now, kids have multiple options, performing groups, band, chorus, and a music exploration component that was added for every grade, so it's, it's a good time to be in music at the middle school, and district-wide, a lot of high school opportunities too. Mr. Tinnarelle, I do not have a question slide, but I go to you first, sir, for questions, if you have any.
You answered all my questions. Yeah, I'll open up to the, to the group first.
What are the numbers at TES right now?
So TES right now, probably about, I'd say 45 at TES, and that, that fluctuates, so as far as band, because they start in fifth grade.
Right.
I mean, that changed as, as early as today, kids, kids go throughout the, the year when it's, oh, well, we tried it, we didn't like it, or, you know, they're just too busy to practice with other commitments, so it varies throughout the year. Sometimes we start, we've had years where at TES, we've started at the very start of the year, as many as 70 kids. Like last year, we started 40, and then it just, it, it goes down from there, you know, as the kids start, start going through the program and decide whether or not it's, it's for them. So participation starting number... not it's, it's for them. So participation starting numbers differ greatly every year. Also found this year for grade six, we got more new kids starting than we usually do. So we probably had for grade six, about seven or eight kids start new, which usually doesn't happen. So that's, that's a good thing as well.
How many people, do you typically see percentage-wise? Because I know, like, if we've got 77 at the middle school level, then that clearly is different from each grade. Percentage-wise, how many people transition from grades five and six into the seven and 12 band typically?
Well, I tend to look at it more as, the, the cutoffs really go, we've done a really good job with scheduling at the middle school over the years. So it doesn't seem like playing in the band is in competition with other
Sure.
of the grade elector, of the, you know, specialist classes and, and, and other things. So I look at it as more as the cutoff going from eight to nine.
Okay.
Okay. One of the reasons we operate as a seven through 12 is because I, there was a year, probably 10 years ago, I felt that those kids, and we had a lot of strong eighth grade players, and then having those nine through 12 kids to have the best well-rounded musical experience, for example, having balanced instrumentation. You know, you need the low players, you need the high players.
Right.
You need enough Barry Saxes, trombones, and the flutes to combine it as a seven through 12. So
Okay.
the, the drop off usually is more, we see sometimes five through six, and then as an eight through nine too, for a variety of reasons.
Would, would you consider repeating this Disney program again in the future? Did you feel that the kids really kind of, like, pro-con?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would consider repeating it in the future. Not too soon, no. I'm still recovering. Yeah, so it was a lot of plan, a lot of extra planning involved with it, but I think too, now that we've done it one ti, you know, one time through. But also, keep in mind the reason we were able to offer it this time, you know, we even had, it depends on who signed, who signs up.
Sure.
We need a certain number to make it run, because again, it's not open to the entire
Right.
you know, for example, like the, the high school travel program, which is wonderful, open to, to all students. You know, this, it's for the band, for the band program. So you need
Right.
those families to be able to, to participate. And so we were able to do it this year. We had more registration numbers. It dropped off once the first payment was due.
Sure.
But luckily, we were still able to, to make it happen, which I'm very proud of.
So clearly, Mr. Tinnarelle tipped you off about my question about the 2019 standards, so we'll move past that.
I anticipated it.
So you were just talking about the need for, you know, the lows and the highs when you put together a full, you know, group. What happens if you have 12 kids who want to play tuba? Do you, like, set a limit?
We never have 12 kids that want to play tuba. Never have that.
Do you try and drive kids to a certain way so you get that full range?
Well, I've, I've just learned over the years, because I know some, you know, some elementary-only band directors, for example, they will put a limit on percussion or a limit on what numbers. I always put as a precaution on the signup sheet, depending on percussion, the drum signups, they may have, you know, please select a second instrument just in case. But I've never gone with that. I've always allowed kids to play whatever instrument they want to start in, in fifth grade in elementary school, because you never know the kids that will continue to sixth or seventh or eighth are through the high school program. When I, my first year here, I remember specifically having a dad come up and say, any chance my kiddo can play percussion? You know, he was told he had to do trumpet in fifth grade because there were no more spots for him. I said, sure, we need more percussionists. There weren't enough. And that kid continued percussion all the way through senior year. So you just, you never know. Some of the instruments, for example, there, it's easier to convert to other things. One of the reasons why it's important to have school-owned instruments in groups like the Music Parents Association to maintain those school-owned instruments, for example, baritone plays low notes like the trombone, three fingers, just like trumpet. You can play it just like you would a trumpet, so I can transition those kiddos. I'll say, hey, you have the opportunity to do this. You know, would any of you guys like to transition to, you know, play a, playing a low instrument? And then it's easier for them to approach that, because they already have some of the skills from playing trumpet. So I have tricks. Something like bass clarinet, you play clarinet, bass clarinet, the one that sits on the ground, plays low notes, because play, like a Barry Sax would, same deal with a baritone sax, same fingerings as alto sax, bass clarinet, same fingers as clarinet. So we have those instruments available to kiddos as they come up to the middle school program, so we can transition them over to, to those instruments where we need it.
Excellent. I, I think it's a wonderful program.
Thank you.
One of my favorite parts of graduation every year is the band being there.
Well, we'll be back this year, and hopefully the admin can hear right through the ceiling. We're starting on Stars and Stripes.
That's good.
So we're going to play it nice and loud just for you. You can enjoy it every morning.
That's good.
I always said that was my favorite part of graduation. Other than the kids graduating.
Nice save, nice save. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I just want to thank you for taking the kids. I know how much work it would be to take a whole crew like that.
Yes.
So thank you so much for
You're welcome. Thank, yeah.
your time and taking them.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming out.
Thanks, Mr. Eaton. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you.
And we'll see you on June 7th.
Sounds good.
Back to our regular scheduled programming.
Item four.
Item number four, correspondence.
Mr. Chair, just quickly, the first piece of correspondence is a communication that I sent to Senator Kennedy and Representative Gary this morning with the MAS legislative priorities we talked about last night. Specifically, I cited that need to look at the long-term fiscal health and sustainability of special education in the Commonwealth, that bill we talked about. So I thank them for their advocacy on that and encourage them to support it. So that's the first piece. Mr. Messina has the second piece.
Yes. Very quickly, as I mentioned at an earlier school committee meeting, we did some cost analysis in terms of opening our buildings when we host the non-traditional renters, the youth sports groups and those groups, where we're not trying to charge them a large fee to come into our buildings. We were inadvertently diverting a large amount of educational dollars towards hosting those groups. So this is a letter in your drive that is going out to the youth sports groups in town tomorrow, and it's basically saying in order to protect the educational funding for the schools and to give our second shift custodians the opportunity to clean the buildings, which is what they're, they're for, we will be giving the youth sports groups a dedicated custodian that we are obligated by contract to pay $40 an hour, as well as a hosting facility fee of $5 in addition to that cost, just to cover some of those costs that are incurred when we host these sports groups in our buildings and on our fields, electricity, heat, paper goods, et cetera, effective July 1st.
All right, very good, very good, Mr. Messina.
You're welcome.
I also received a email from committee member Jeff Bowe. I spoke to some of you. He has resigned his position here with the school committee effective immediately. I wish him all the luck and thank him for his service on this committee for the years that he put in and the committees that he was on. He did a lot of good work for us. So thank you very much, Mr. Bowe. We'll move on to personnel.
Any follow-up with that communication?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We're also, I'm going to ask Dr. Flanagan to please notify the town hall.
Town manager, town clerk.
And town clerk.
Okay.
To see our next step forward.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Personnel, we have one notification of resignation. Actually, it's the second time we've received this notification of resignation. Rachel Leo, her last day was last Friday. It was a very emotional day for her. A great, great employee. Wish her the very best going forward. So thanks for everything you did for us. Rachel, notification new hire, Olga Munoz, who is starting here as a second shift custodian at Tinsborough High School. So welcome to Olga.
Share the success, Bari. You would have normally done this an hour and a half ago. That's what you get for being late.
Yeah, sorry. Overslept, my bad.
Overslept at 7 o'clock at night.
At 5, I woke up. Like 7, 5.
All right.
Yeah. Okay, so I was out the past two weeks, or two, two meetings, so I have a little bit more at the end. So TES, they shared their update today in their presentation earlier in this meeting. For the middle school, 83 eighth graders had a successful departure yesterday for their DC trip. For Eclipse yesterday, students received a pair of Eclipse classes from a donation from Mr. Joyl, and we watched the stages of Eclipse from 2:15 to 3:45, and then got on the late bus, then they got on the late bus. We completed the eighth grade ELA MCAS, and they had a, they had great effort on their writing response prompts. The sixth and seventh grade ELA MCAS is happening this week. Our project 351 Cradle to, Cradle to Crayons clothing collection is ongoing with Kristen DeShane spearheading the effort. Parents are encouraged to send in sports pictures for the yearbook, which is nearly complete. We are all looking forward to a well-deserved break coming up in a week. At the high school, school counseling is in collaboration with Assumption University, and they organized a school tour last week for juniors. A total of 35 students took the opportunity to visit the campus. Evan and Joanne traveled to the Massachusetts State House to represent THS at the Student Government Day. Joanne was actually chosen to be the Sergeant of Arms for the Student Senate Hearing. Forty-two students and six chaperones are heading to Italy on Thursday. They will land in Milan before traveling to Venice, Florence, and then Rome. Spring sports are underway. Good luck to all our athletes and teams this season. So I have two batches of students of the month for today. So congratulations to our March students of the month, Kaylee Cashman, Ashley Gauthiers, Kristos Panagakis, and Claire Shambly. Congratulations to our April students of the month as well, Dorothy Dorothy, Anna Grivin, Madeline Meniker, and Cam Prudash, Prudashki. That's all I have for today. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sure, Bari.
Unfinished business.
So we're up in our MSBA update. The first slide is just our standard upcoming meeting schedule. You can see that May is going to be busy with town meeting on the first Tuesday, then a school committee meeting second Tuesday, and a town election on the third Tuesday. So that is what's coming down the pike. Next school committee meeting, we'll have superintendent evaluation subcommittee meeting prior to the start, be about 23rd. Just going to the MSBA update, you know, work's progressing. Progress is happening. They're doing a great job. I guess a couple of milestones is concrete slab, foundation, floor is being poured right now. Central office, the main office, parts of the cafeteria have been poured. They're still going to finish the cafeteria and the gym. That's, that's ongoing. Framing is ongoing. One milestone that they talk about is sheetrock, and building A will begin in the next few weeks. So that's, that's an ongoing process. Things are, things are on schedule there. Additionally, we, we met with the TMS administration, and we're really starting to look at the floor plan now. We're looking at the designs. We're really starting to make some decisions about where sixth grade are going to go, where seventh grade are going to go, and what teachers and, and rooms are going to be assigned accordingly. So we have some tentative thoughts about that. They asked us to kind of put our thoughts on paper, and then we will meet with J C J in left field and really talk about pitfalls and strategies, and hey, did you think about this? Because they've done this hundreds of times. So, so that's all ongoing. And once we make those final determinations, we will then have a final F F and E meeting to talk about what the furniture is going to look like and actual procurement process and the procurement timeline. So the project is ongoing, and it's all very exciting. So. And that's it for MSBA. And we have a picture of the poured flooring. You can see that's actually a look in from the second floor of TMS looking at, that's our central office on the left, and that's really going to be a community entrance right there, just to the right of where those gentlemen in the yellow shirts are. And that'll be hallway right down to the locker room, to the, to the gym area and the IT office. So it's fun. It's exciting.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Yep.
Teaching and learning, Mr. Woodlock.
Yes, so I know we've had a lot of presentations this evening, so I'll be brief. But I just thought it was a great opportunity to check in on one of our, our core goals for not only this year, but last year in teaching and learning is to really focus on instructional leadership. And so as part of what we do, this is just kind of an update. This is what we do every month, but just to give you an idea. This week, we've engaged in walkthroughs. We did have one scheduled for the middle school tomorrow, but we have the eighth grade in Washington. We have MCAS testing, so we're rescheduling that. But we were able to, as an administrative team with Sarah Lewentzick and myself, go through fifth grade classrooms, spend some time in the fifth grade, watch what's going on there. We come back, we meet, we share, compare notes. We talk about, you know, what, what was really good, what will we share? And these are non-evaluable. What will we share with teachers if we were evaluating, if we were observing and giving them feedback? What could we give them as positive feedback? What could we give them to help push them a little bit further? So really, it's a calibration exercise, but also it's to be in classrooms. And I think Mrs. Kavanaugh talked about being in classrooms a lot today, and that's something that we've really focused on doing, making sure that as administrators, we're not just meeting the bare minimums as, you know, proposed in the contract and evaluation language, but being in classrooms, truly understanding what's going on in classrooms, understanding, you know, the vibe of classrooms, how it feels and, and where students are at. So that was great to be in TES earlier this week. Yesterday, we did tours in THS. We got into a couple of science classrooms. We got into Spanish classroom, Mr. Richall's business classroom, which was great. They were doing resumes in there, and just a lot of great stuff going on. So I know we, we probably do say it a lot, but I don't think we can ever say enough what a great job our teachers do. And so it's always great to, to be in classrooms and do that, and then to be able to share those experiences with others and talk about good teaching. Additionally, this is kind of the week we do our monthly building-specific administration meeting. So again, Ms. Lewentzick and I meet with building administrators once every month to talk about where are we with a number of things. As, you know, we talk about data analysis, PD, SDI updates, but we're always coming back to instructional leadership. What are we doing with that? We don't want to lose focus on that, because we know statistically, it's one of the most important things we can do to push student achievement as administrators. We get caught up in a lot on the minutia all the time, the day-to-day, but we want to make sure we're always coming back to that, because we know that is going to, you know, equate to results. So. So that's it. I told you I'd be brief. If anyone has questions.
Good job.
No questions? Now we skipped to 10. Finance, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for signing of bills. There were 11 bill warrants presented to the committee tonight. As always, in your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts, and I do have them all back approved, and nothing for payroll tonight. That's it.
Thank you. School committee discussion, Bari.
I just wanted to say, I was impressed with the elementary schoolers today. I think that was the best group I've had since, like, I started being student rep. I was really impressed. Also, Mr. Eaton, good job with his presentation. I really enjoyed seeing how there's, like, different opportunities here in TPS. Yeah, that's all I have for today.
Right.
Thank you.
I just want to wish the eighth graders a great trip. I've already heard some feedback. They're having a great time. And then also, thanks to our presenters. I was especially happy to hear about the focus on the transition from schools. That it's definitely, they've done well with it in the past, but definitely room for improvement, and I'm very excited to see what comes out of that.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Mr. Messina.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Want to echo what was said about Mr. Eaton. I love seeing the enthusiasm that he has for his job, and just a love that he, for what he gets to do and work with the, with the kids. It looked like they had a great time. Again, also, the, the kids tonight were wonderful. And just a credit to some of their parents. That was a compliment to the parents in the room, okay? So I'm not going to wax poetic about Rachel again. I did that last time. She quit. I'm not doing anything. So I hope she enjoys herself. But that's all I have tonight.
I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight. It's great to see the administration so willing to change and pivot and look at things and relook at things and make work on the transition and make changes in the schedule if need be. The elementary school kids did amazing. They impress us every time they come. And that's it. Thank you.
I've got a list. I'll try and get through it quick. So TES students, absolutely amazing job. They consistently are the best presenters. I'm not sure how they keep doing it, but they're, they're always the best when they come out here. Appreciate the TES admin focusing on continuous improvement across multiple areas. I think that's the right attitude, and I appreciate that. Echo Rob's thoughts on Mr. Eaton. I, I love the passion. I'm a huge fan of music, so I love seeing how strong our music program is. And, you know, it'll be good to see the band back at the know, it'll be good to see the band back at the graduation this year.
Yes.
Best of luck again to Rachel Leo, best of luck to Jeff Boe, thank you for all your service the last few years. Good luck to the eighth graders in DC. My daughter went last year, it's a wonderful trip, they're going to remember that for the rest of their life, so I'm happy for them. Special thank you to Rainy Joyal for donating the Eclipse glasses, I thought that was pretty neat. And then I think the job that Kristin DeShane has done, she collected 40 bags of clothings for the Cradles to Crayons charity, so I think that's amazing that, you know, she was able to step up and do that, so, great job, Kristin.
Excellent, thank you.
I will echo what everybody else said. Always love seeing the TES kids, even if I am a little biased, Cisco. They, they are truly great, and I now know the secrets of why they're so polished and tip-top shiny every time they come in. I have inside scoops. But they do, they do an amazing job, and I know a lot of those kids are nervous, and they, they don't let it show. They did great. Thank you to the admin team for TES, for presenting their stuff and answering all of our questions. They're biting off a lot, and I'm excited for it, and I just wish them the best luck with it, and I'm interested to hear how it goes. I'm super excited to hear the band program is continuing to grow. I know there was some concern post-COVID, that there were a lot of kids that dropped off, because during COVID, you couldn't really put spit in the air through your instruments. So I'm really glad to see that taking off the ground again, and just, yeah, that's all I got tonight.
Yeah, a lot of presentations, great job by all. I don't need to beat a dead horse here, they, they were great. The kids are, the kids are outstanding.
Agreed. Agreed with everything everyone else said. And thank you to the parents for bringing them out. I know we all have busy lives and failed to do that, thank you. We do have need for executive session this evening to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body as declared by the chair, we will return from executive session only to adjourn our regular session meeting. This action does require a roll call vote, not through the motion.
I will move to go to executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.